Okay, I can't, the meeting's work session is now in order. On our first order of business, we're gonna ask Ms. Kelly to come on up in the Sheriff's Department. Talk about the bidding out of the food for the Pacano's here. Go ahead.
Hey, we, uh, we wanna bid out the food service from the jail. Hope it's to bring down costs and to make it a little easier on us in getting the food to the jail. And then we'll have a truck come and bring part of it. I'm going to the prison after we talk about picking up part of it and we go as the pig here, Troy, and the rest. I've talked to several jail commissioners around the area that are using the program. Different program and they're having great success with it. Our main concern is trying to reduce our cost.
Questions?
I know you've all been hearing this is finally all good.
I know it's all time, but all y'all have to stand, have to go get it and come back.
Yeah, we're having to either pay overtime or taking someone out of the jail to go do it.
Going with this program, having to have a break team, actually go get it all, which is right for me, right?
We're looking for someone who will help to lead out for us, who will lead the additional guidelines that we have to lead. They will also come in and train our staff, they will make our orders and they will all be delivered to us. So we don't have to go get it.
So you're gonna get these thousands of them back here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, any more questions? When you said you're going, you checked your further, you checked your further, uh, food and materials for chairs, for kindergarteners, you know?
Yes, sir. Um, but there's plenty of crucial care and we also have. There are ones that might ask the commission as responsible, off of the sheriff and some of the commissions, that are gonna bid it out. That's, that's when I talk with them.
Got it all? Thank you. Any more for others? Good afternoon, good afternoon. We got three items under new business, we have a number of current business. We have a lunch and a project today.
And then we have a personnel memo in your agenda package. That's just two employees that are reaching the end of their six month probationary period. So we'll let that roll down to current business. And, uh, and that will be, they will have reached the end of their probationary period by the time your next meeting rolls around. Then we also, under new business, we have an equipment request. We, um, we've purchased all the equipment in the budget except the new triaxle dump trucks. And we pretty well know exactly what those are gonna cost. So considering every, accounting for everything, we're, it looks like we're under overall about seventeen thousand, a little over seventeen thousand dollars. So we're requesting another one of those small trailers that we haul the compact track loader and the mini excavator around. Just, uh, that's one thing that the guys have, you know, expressed to me several times that they could get a lot more done if they could go in separate directions with those pieces of equipment. So have us work a little more efficiently there and, uh, more productive. And then under current business, we have a list of equipment for you to declare surplus. And there's a, also a memo with that detailing the, uh, the method of disposal of those. And then the industrial access project. I think we have some information on the short term loan. Do we have that yet? Yeah, Mackenzie's got that. So, um, we have that. And then I'm also waiting on an agreement. Uh, they haven't sent it to me yet, but I'm waiting on an agreement for the C E N I from C D G for the, um, federal aid industrial access resurfacing project on seventy seven forty ten. So that'll be the last, um, engineering agreement that we have to deal with for those three projects associated with Rixon. And the only other thing under current business that we have is the, uh, C D B G project on seventy seven forty nine and twenty two fifty six. I did get a call from, uh, Mr. McClure, which, which should rise not here, but I did get a call from a Mr. McClure asking about that. And, you know, he expressed to me that all of the citizens out there in McClure Town are still very anxious to get the road fixed. And, uh, so he's gonna be sending us some information, some letters and whatnot in the future. But we're still waiting on the, uh, information regarding utility cost estimates from Pacano's work.
Please, excuse me, questions for the engineers? Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other?
I don't actually have any action items or anything that requires action, but we'll give you an update on the Meeksville Shelter. We did have a pre-bid meeting last week and the bids for this project will open on Thursday of this week. So at the next commission date, we'll come back, uh, with a, uh, the bid proposals. We only have one contract to come for the pre-bid meeting. It was not a mandatory meeting, so hopefully some others will bid on it. But the actual site plans and the specs are up here if you wanna look at them during the break. Um, but we'll open myself and the bids on the twenty eighth and then, um, hopefully be able to approve it and issue award documents and our bid, uh, construction documents, excuse me, and get this project underway if it's within our budget. The only other two things I'd like to mention is, one, there's been a, um, a request for us to look at additional monies for additional shelters. Right now, there is no money available through the state until another disaster declaration is issued by the governor's office. And normally there's some money, we can apply for some money through the federal government. There is a match with that, but I didn't know how, if you would want us to pursue that. It would be a grant through the federal government and of course it's open to anybody nationwide, so it'd be a very competitive process. But if you wanna look at, trying to find some additional money for some additional shelters, I know there's been some, uh, interest expressed in a couple of communities. So, you know, certainly we can pursue that if you wanna do that. And then lastly, we've been putting, uh, trying to put a push on to get people signed for their smart nine one one. We have, uh, taken an ad out in the Massacre, we've taken an ad out Troy Cable Community Building Board. We're sending these flyers home to the school kids and so truly trying to push to get people to get on that smart nine one one. Hopefully we'll have some numbers. Chris is gonna look at numbers and see if we see any kind of an increase over the next couple of weeks. And that's all I have.
I got any questions, tell me.
All the shelter stuff, since one of those groups of people were in my district. And we talked about that when they came up to the office this past week. Up at Springfield Church where they're talking about this, this, the population is not as heavy right there as in Meeksville. And, and the, how would we, before we even, how, what would we have to do to be able to look and say, you know, we could have the shelter half that size and it'd be adequate for that area? I mean, how, how did they come up with the capacity number of the one in Meeksville? Was it standard or the number of?
Honestly, I don't know that number was set, you know, prior to me getting involved in it, it said a hundred. And I'm not sure how that, that number came about.
The only reason I ask that is I know that, you know, depending on the match as a percentage of the project and if, you know, my thinking at the table of the day was if, if because of the, it being less partially populated, if you, a shelter half or third, that size would be adequate. It would be less money, was my thinking, which would mean less match. And I just was trying to think how we'd start that dialogue, dialogue business.
Well, we can go, you know, I said, I've talked to the state hazardous mitigation officer and of course he directed me there. And of course, this is the same information we got from the consultant that is working on the current shelter. I have not talked to anybody from FEMA yet. We can talk to FEMA and see if, you know, what the, if there's a, you know, some kind of formula that's used as far as population in an area, a certain square miles. If you want us to pursue, I don't mind doing it.
Well, I, I think it'd be easier for us to have a conversation about that and what is the match with that federal. Yeah, I know that's a stretch, getting federal money competing with the whole rest of the country, but, but it'd be easier for us to have a dialogue. What we were looking monetarily, need the match.
Well, by the next minute, I'll come back and give you some, some numbers on, you know, population, square miles, stuff like that.
Cause that's something Chris should be able to run in doing nine one one. If we give him a location, how many people live in a certain?
He should be able to with addresses.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Attorney for court?
No record, I said. I did send an email out today to y'all on that, but that's all.
Anything, Commissioner Harrow report?
I should've done it while Russell was up there, but, you know, last week, we talked about, our last meeting, we talked about kinda getting a memo that laid out all the, those things that we were discussing. And Russell's done a pretty good job of getting that laid out. So just really quick, I'm gonna run over some of that stuff, um, now that I've got actual numbers and stuff in front of me. So this, two thousand sixteen numbers, um, the money that we had spent doing, spent doing right away maintenance was about two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, just south of that. Um, which if you, uh, you guys know the thing that the county commission association's been working on, so you know the, some of the numbers that were at the bottom. We had about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was usable income after we paid everything we had to pay. So that number obviously is pretty much a hundred percent of that. So we were spending almost our entire, um, materials budget on cutting grass. Is that fair? About that same equivalent. So last year, we spent a hundred and forty four thousand, you know, we all know the, the trade offs and I'm not here to debate whether we wanna cut the roof. But that, um, also the employee reductions and payroll changes that we've done at the road department saving another additional ninety five thousand dollars. To grand total of the road department savings of approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, which is pretty significant. That's, that's changing a few programs up, changing the way that we, um, some of the slots and things that we had. Um, so using, stepping from that, we went into kinda how we funded that, um, the twenty four month plan. Cause we talked about what we were doing with our, um, what used to be the rainy day fund, which is the, um, savings from the, um, I'm drawing a blank, yeah.
Savings from the lodging tax.
Lodging tax. So none of that was spent on the twenty four month plan. So I also asked Russell when he sent out the memo to you guys to resend out, when he sent his memo, resend out the one Harry did for us that laid out where all this money came from. So savings out of the road and bridge of three hundred and eighty five thousand, we used the, um, labor savings that he generated. And then the general fund kicked in a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year to get us to that six hundred thousand dollars a year that we spent. So the local paving and all the work that we've done on the twenty four month plan has been outside of that rainy day fund or that lodging tax fund. But just a, a good reminder, cause I know I would get, uh, we were going so fast and got so many things going, all the things that we've put into place. Kind of a scorecard on how, uh, how some of the stuff actually did stack up after the numbers were run. So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I, uh, I said a few meetings ago, I was gonna start, I mean, I don't wanna be up too much in this, but I hope by the next meeting, I'm gonna bring y'all a proposal on a trash litter picking up plan that would, uh, potentially be three days a week, forty eight weeks out of the year. And I am working with a couple of different groups in the county about how to, uh, fund that without any constraint on anything currently going on. And, uh, I feel like it, you know, for potentially fifty thousand dollars or less, maybe a little less than that a year. We could have a, a year, you know, almost every week of the year, trash pickup program here to find stuff. And I'll have a, I'll put something together in writing with everybody that's willing to help me make that a reality and bring that to y'all at the, at the next meeting. Okay?
Okay. Commissioner Harris?
On the last meeting, I was concerned about the memo that, uh, Kenzie gave us. And I have a, a problem with it. And, uh, we, as, I need to go into a second discussion to simply discuss some of the things that I have with, because it's gonna be calling it name and character of the person. And I, I need to do that. I can, uh, because the spending rules, we do it tonight because it's not on your agenda. Because I read it a couple of times, I have a problem with, with it.
Will it be fair that, uh, return?
So, uh, are you referring to what was on the last meeting's agenda? Um, kind of off?
On that agenda, on your memo, that Mackenzie sent out for, for the office in person.
Okay. Uh, if I can recall, the one you're referring to, I just don't, I just don't wanna give an answer, I'm thinking of something else, since we can't discuss it. This is first I've heard of, of that, so. I mean, if anybody, if it involves discussing an employee, then obviously that's name and character exemption. You know, whether, you know, whether you're gonna suspend a rule, I mean, it's not on the agenda, so you're basically bringing it back up. Also, it's already voted on, but, maybe up to the commission to do that. Now, I'm just technically saying if something's been disposed of, which I'm saying, if this is, if this is what I'm thinking that you're talking about, then that matter was voted on. So it's really, uh, Commissioner Ash, which he has every right to do, so would anybody, has, is asking that he, he wants to bring it back up, suspend the rules because it's not on his agenda. And that's, I mean, I'm just saying, that's a commission decision, would you? You bring something up that's already been voted on and not on this agenda, exactly. I'm, I'm not sure you'd do that. But you, I mean, you can do whatever you want, as a part of, you know, this league is five of the years, so if three of you are in favor of that, then certainly you can decide to do that. You're basically asking, as I understand it, to go in the executive session to discuss a matter on the memo. And that's, I mean, at that point, I mean, at this point, I saw you asking.
I discussed the memo because she was here to explain this memo exactly like, it should have been explained to the commission. Just was a memo that she came and left and she wasn't present to explain it to the commission.
Well, that, I'm saying you, you can either, I mean, you can either not do it because it's, it's done and disposed of, or or you can, you can say you wanna hear, you're, you're, you know, you're gladly, as y'all been doing, you're trying, you know, offering opportunity to go behind closed doors and hear what Commissioner Harris is talking about. And then when you come back out, you can officially decide what, if anything, you wanna do or not do. Cause I understand that you're, you're simply asking to suspend the rules on personnel matter and you specified the memo from Mackenzie that was voted on two weeks ago.
Right.
But your request is to go in the executive session to just, you have some concerns about it. And so that's the request, as I understand it. That would definitely need the exemption to go in the executive session if y'all voted to do something, you know, send your hands.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Administered report.
We have, um, been working on a website, what we've been telling y'all about and some social media accounts for the commission. And so we've got that time, we're gonna show that to y'all personally, that's how I like it, y'all. And it's still a lot more, you're, it's way clearer when I'm here. This is a whole page. These are the slideshows, little slide, every three, four minutes. These are the photos that, um, Commissioner Hovum had a manual out to the county. So this is just various pictures around the county. And we're also waiting on the towns and the ocean, cause we want for all the towns to see, um, and the courthouse, that's gonna be the manual too. And we have that next year, but, um, this is the calendar. I can go in and you can go in and put anything, like today for example, that is a commission meeting. Um, any public event, one call, second room calendar, I can easily go in, put on there. Um, large on it, put your next commission meeting. And then this footer is on the bottom of every page. It has contact with the commission office. And then we have, I created a frequently asked question page. And on that page will be the garbage pickup, the rotor, if you have a rotor bridge issue, and sales tax questions. Cause these are a couple of questions that people called out the very most. We have questions all the time about this, so this explains you some of those. And then it's drawn along, we will go down every page because we are driving the numbers up, as, um, even in our director said. And then at the bottom also will be the Facebook and the Twitter that we recently created. Um, so we can click on that and it'll go straight to the Facebook page. And then we can see our, um, there's a way you can, it's just Pacano's commission. Um, there's a way that you can actually put your most recent post on the website, if you people don't have Facebook, then you can see that. Um, which that information will also be on the website, so. And those aren't live, you have to, y'all, study your reading, rocking that does live, but that's not. And then the next page, we have the county commission. And that discusses where and where the meetings are. And then how you can get on the agenda. So you can mail it over to anyone. Or of course call the office, but you can also easily type in your information and that goes straight to Mackenzie's email. And she has your talkback, your email, your phone number, and your name, so she can reply back kind of what you're, you've been put on there. And then we have the specific commissioners in the district. And then you scroll down, there's a link right here to the virtual Paco County. And when they click on that, then it says, they type in their address and it shows all kinds of stuff. It shows their district commissioner, their voting district, a lot of the commissions, that's easily found. And the frequently asked question of who is my commissioner, we go to this page and they can see that. And then we have the agenda in the minutes. And I've uploaded all, just for instance, like December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen for the agenda. And it goes in a different tab so that you can, you can remain on the website, but then you can scroll and see that. That was the special meeting, so it's not long. Um, but I've got all those uploaded and the minutes are the same, just say January fourteenth, and that pops up in the minutes. And the same for the videos. I have the, the videos that Troy Cable, it goes straight to their YouTube, so. And I specified out that they're separate, um, videos, the work session, order regulating, and for instance, this is the same. And, um, Commissioner Hovum said he's gonna check on these other next one, but some of them, they did not pull. And they go back, the videos, the minutes, and the minutes go back to this fiscal year, so whichever one it's, September. And maybe he's talked about having an archive, you know, for past years when we, um, get that one. And we have our about Paco County and this just shows, he'll be able to about Paco County. And when we get the, the picture of the courthouse and all those, um, that will go here, the courthouse. Shows you that, courthouse and courthouse. Again, under, but all we have are community links. This is the whole of, in our county, we're all in our county. And when you click on each one, it goes in a different tab to their website. Everyone has a website, so maybe it does, if you want something added on there, I mean, she's easily going in and she made changes on the website all the time. If y'all see something, we're gonna add it on there. She did that. And then this is that frequently asked question, anything you add up to, um, if we notice something's frequently asked. And then the next news, this was just the news from when I started putting something on here. This is from that, um, letter of our grant, the winter magazine that came out, we have the commissioners in that magazine. Um, and I do have the pictures for that and I plan to put them on this page. And then you can also go to their website right there. And then the red closures. I got this from, I think I subscribed and we didn't have some, because everyone talked to us, so. Um, and I told him for now, when, when I'm, when I'm ready to get the red orders, I'll know to, you know, put it back. And then this is the stack with the office, the commission office. And just that information. And then the county directory, so this is the number three, all of the other offices. And if they had a website, you can click on that and it'll go to that site. Then employees from the county, it's not an access, just real quickly, then you just click on that and it'll go to a different link, right there. Right there, it goes to the login, or they can login, you know, like, and then there being employment opportunities throughout the county. Apparently there's not, but if they're off, they'll be rather. John, is this anything?
I'm about to, the, the first page with the big logo, see the logo up there is very small.
The, the top of that?
The top of the column, yeah.
Yeah.
And be, be, that need to be, to me, that need to be the front page, the logo.
Okay.
Have it be, really be. So that looks good.
Anytime y'all think something new added on there or something changed, I mean, you can send it to the call, we can, we can go in there and do that.
So we got two, um, big economic development things going on right now. Where are we?
So we got two, um, big economic development things going on right now, where would you put it, so we don't want to, I think it'd be a good idea to have updates on, say, Rex, Rex's project, since it's a county-led project, I know Kimber were involved too, you understand what I'm saying? So where would you put that? Where would I go if I wanted to get it?
I could put that news, if you would love me to make, since that's kind of the county project, I can make tabs for that underneath if you would want it to be.
Or just a whole another tab on there, so?
I could, under, I could, like, put a column, and then we'll just come up Rex, Kimber.
Economic development?
Economic. So, and also, we got, obviously, one of the reasons we were pushing to try to get this out this week is because of the things that are going on in the jail. We want a spot where people can go, maybe link the YouTube video of the, um, Brundage and Troy, um, public hearing, um, maybe some of that information, I know we can't probably put it all out there, but, um, just wait, you can go, I know we're fixing to, we're working on getting those questions, the questions that were asked and answered, and some of the things that we were pulling information together somewhere, like a tab, that jail, um, I, I don't know how you separate that, we'll probably have to brainstorm and look at it and kind of see what comes up, because you don't want somebody going in thinking they're going to the jail to see what Kelly's do, and they get in there and they're seeing, um, something different, but, um...
And there's also options, like, um, maybe for a show, the, the most recent updates of, pretty much even if you want people to know, you thought they're going to be coming pretty often, throw a lot of them, you can add that on the front page, and it can also be in your day reserve or, um, if that's...
So see about somewhere Kimber and Rex, and then the jail, definitely the jail, that's probably the most important of those, short-term.
I can do that, but, um, it's ready whenever y'all ready for it, if they're live, and we're just making up to it, as you go, once y'all are ready, we can go ahead on that.
So the, um, so this is ready to go out, and you said on the, on Twitter and Facebook, you're ready to go out as well?
They're ready, they're sitting, they're ready, they're just, like, the public can't ask, I believe right now, it's just caught me myself with all the administrators on the, um, Facebook page, but we just have it when nobody else can get off here, so you're right now. And, but they should be ready to go out.
So I guess if we want to do this tonight, we'd have to suspend the rules, because we took it out with agenda.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you want to push that, we might create changes and that way, all of the other, I mean, we're ready to go up, we can, like, as long as people can do this.
I just had to wait two weeks, because this was the main, the best means that we got to get the jail information, the questions. I, I mean, I know Jacob's going to find them, and we don't have them on here, but a lot of people are going to want to go through the website. You can hold your letters.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner, you ready? All right. Thank you.
The lot, lots of turn back on for us. The second thing under the administrative report is personnel for the office, and it's just kind of being put there as a placeholder, uh, our personnel and safety director position will have been at their six months' time, uh, this week, and so just putting it there so that we'll have that ready to be voted on under current business at the next meeting. If y'all have any questions on that, the, uh, there's a third item that's not listed under the administrative report, but the bid that, uh, Jelly, uh, that, Jelly, Kelly gave me that's about for the jail, um, the food bid, the jail food bid, uh, I think that they're ready to go ahead, if, if y'all don't mind suspending the rules, and let's get those bids sent out, so that we can, um, maybe get moving on that, and get something done about the, the foods and all. And I believe y'all, you should all have a copy of the, uh, the memo and, uh, the bid that they're wanting, that we're, they're wanting to send out.
Just the information we got received back, so?
Yes.
We, we'll get that there.
Yeah, and that, there, there's some time, it would be, it'd be a couple of meetings before you could even actually award a bid, because the time we'd send it out, I think that's right. Um, but that's all under the new business, under current business, uh, like, uh, the engineer, Mr. Oliver said, the industrial access project, I did get some quotes for y'all from some banks, uh, y'all should have that memo in front of you, um, Pro Bank Trust was the low bidder on that, so if you're wanting to take action on that, I think we're ready to move forward on that, because they're, we're going to be needing it before T-line, hopefully we get some road building on that one. Next would be, I don't have anything on the Pike County Emergency Management and Communications District this meeting, uh, the Pike County Jail, do y'all have anything on that?
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I guess after our public hearings and, um, you know, engaging with the people that were there and kind of looking over, um, you know, I, I know we've been working on this a long time, this is kind of just culmination, but I think it's probably the time that we move forward with phase two, with TCU, going to engage them on phase two, and probably going to make the decision that it's going to go off-site and not at the courthouse. That'll allow TCU's first, you know, the first thing that we need them to do is take those sites that we've been discussing, and let him put a proposal together on all of those costs versus utility costs versus dirt moving costs, and he can give us our site, kind of site assessments, so we can make some decisions on that, because until we, until we solidify a little bit, then it's going to be hard for him to start putting a lot of that stuff into detail.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I agree with some that Jay just, just spoken, but, uh, we need to sit down and talk to TCU, uh, TCU again, before we decide to go into our second phase, you know, and close out the first phase, and sit down and talk with them on the second phase, because there's, there's some sites that's, is, is, is not going to be our requirement, you know, uh, for one. For another, we, one site we got out there is that. If any commissioner know what that site going to cost, the commissioner don't have any idea of what that site going to cost the commissioners, uh, it shouldn't be used as a site. It's a federal property, and it takes a long time to get, uh, that site, uh, through your, you don't know what, 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 what is the cost of that site, front of me, money in it? I talked to Mr. Upshaw today, and, um, he kind of agreed with me, and that site also is a, 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 a bad site for Pike County Jail, because it's almost within about three hundred feet, three hundred yards or more from the elementary street. You know, we hadn't had a, a, a jail break yet, but if we ever had one, uh, my thinking, thinking in the county that I talked to a lot of people, that you're going to have the first thing you have to do is blow down the school, and you're going to panic every mother that's in this county, father that's in this county that got children going there, and you're going to have a chaos, you know? We already have a preference site, and throwing it out is, is over at the road department. Either way, those sites, you're going to have to transfer prison, because we talking about a mother but child site, uh, putting everything in it, uh, we can have satellites and everything from out there the same way as moving some of the other jails that have been built right in this county, you know? I've talked to a lot of peoples in this county, and, you know, I got my information from them, their idea, uh, about different sites. Everybody know that, uh, what I'm talking about is a dumb bar site, you know? I don't think the county commission should go out there, try to buy some money in and have, have a few of these stated that we had down on it, to buy land that we don't even know nothing about and what it's going to cost us. So that site ought to be eliminated. I mean, because we don't have any idea what that site will cost. I think Mr. Upshaw and them kind of agree with me on, on that, the... Like I said, we don't need to be voting on it until we go back and talk to them and bring them in, and just sit down and talk about the sites that we're going to use. Just eliminate some sites before we vote on something, before we go to phase two.
Chairman? Are you, are you agree with me?
Yeah.
All I was going to say is, that's exactly what I was talking about, do, um, I mean, not eliminate, not eliminating sites on anecdotal information, but engaging them to get us that information, a lot of that information you said, so that we can make a decision, and some of it may be crime statistics, how close they are to the school, what does the, what does it look like, some of it's going to be calls, some of it's going to be utilities, so, I mean, this is, again, anecdotal, I don't, I don't have the numbers, but, you know, yes, there's, using your example of Dunbar, yes, there's property cost there, using the other example you gave is the, um, road department, well, there's no sewer there, so that's kind of where we need to get to, is the same thing we did with the, um, onsite, offsite, and all the options we looked at, I want to say that we've had five or six different sites we've discussed, no, we don't want to pay for a full workup on all of them, but it'd be pretty, um, be pretty cost-effective for us to be able to make a, the proper decision, because it's, yes, because it's not just what does it cost to buy the property, it's also, okay, well, I've got this piece of property that I've got to move four times more dirt and build sewer to it, so those costs may get lost. That's what we need to see, that's what the proposal would be, not that we, we're not, we're not deciding, I'm not calling or asking, just to be clear, I was not asking that we vote on a site, um, I was asking that we vote to move, because I think, uh, I think it was clear from all the information we've been studying as a commission, and, and a lot of the stuff Mr. Ken laid out the other night, that the onsite option, which he called option one in that meeting, is, is unfeasible, and just all the obstacles that we got, not just monetarily, but just logistically, when you start moving that much dirt downtown, and you start displacing all the people that's got to be displaced to make that happen, and then we start looking for that site, and we, yes, we absolutely have to get them to work on, you know, which one's best, help us to understand the differences in the sites, one may come up that we don't even know about today, and we start hoping around, so. That, just to clarify, that was the, the comment, was not to, I'm not putting a site in there, it's, it's just a vote that this thing is going to be offsite, so that we can get TCU working toward helping us narrow down what site it will be, okay?
Like I said, I agree, but we need, and we need them to come right here and let us know that they have finished with phase one. When they tell us they finished with phase one, and left the commission, here's what we need to do when we go to phase two, you know? We hire them to do this, and they need to let the county commission know, hey, we threw phase one, let's move forward to, uh, phase two, and here's what phase two look like now. We need them to do that.
Can you have a comment?
Jay has everything.
Okay. Miss, you tell you? Okay, what's next?
Okay, next is the Pike County Volunteer Firefighters Agreements, we are still actively working with the firefighters, uh, the volunteer firefighters on getting something that we can all agree on, um, we're hoping to get something from them, maybe by the next meeting, it may be something we have to work with too, but they are still working, we're all working together on getting something done on that. Uh, next will be, let's see, the CSX invoices, I would like to tell y'all, I did talk to someone with CSX last week, um, I did make them aware that the Gibb Street crossing was not ours, and that they needed to remove that from the billing, um, and they are doing that, but we're still working on the other information right now.
Okay.
Number nine would be the ACCA resolution on the gas tax, I don't know if y'all are ready on that, or if you want to wait on that right now.
That's still, that's still a shaky target, just moving around, um...
I know you talked to them.
Yeah, I talked to them a couple of times, and every time I talked to them, there's something different, and some changes, and, I mean, from our conversations up here, I think everybody knows the tight we're in for resources for our infrastructure, um, but I still think, without something to really look at, I think we're still in the hold, and my opinion is that we're still in the holding pattern until we really have a, a front article we can look at, and make sure that we're not voting on something that gets used for a bill that we can't support, but that's kind of where I would, that's my recommendation, I know, I told y'all I tried to have y'all some more information, we could sit up here for an hour telling y'all all the different pieces and parts that are in it that I've been told, and then you talk to the next person, that's wrong, and this is all right, so, tell us on paper, I don't know what to tell you.
I, I agree with that, um, that association, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That association, go ahead, what they got to do.
Yes.
And then Chad is on that legislative board, and come back with all of his recommendations, just, just let it flow.
We can leave it on there, and here we get an answer, we should have one by the time the session starts, we're pretty close there after, so.
Yeah, session starts next week?
In March.
Yeah.
Okay, next will be the county levies for alcohol licenses, um, these are the same levies that y'all do annually, um, that y'all do, y'all charge the most, that we're allowed to by law, unless y'all want to change it, come down on something, it's ready to go to, to move forward and be voted on.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Our work session now comes to a close, and it's 6:00 PM, so we got about a five-minute break, and we'll start back in a minute, would you ready to meet?